We'll call to order the City of Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session for this evening, which is Thursday, October the 12th, 2023. Our invocation will be done by Pastor James Harper of First Presbyterian Church of Douglasville, and after that, we'll have the Pledge Allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Good evening. It's good to be with you all again. Let's pray. Holy love of God, as we gather tonight, we do so mindful of all that we've received, grateful for this community, and I'm grateful for these leaders. And I pray, God, that you would instill in them all the wisdom they need to continue to lead well. We pray that you would help them continue to build a community here that honors all people, that lifts all people up, and that makes this place a place where people can thrive and joy can resound and needs can be met. I look around the world and see places where they're not as grateful. And I think of Israel and other places of there's war and hatred, and I pray, God, that you would bring peace to those places so that others can enjoy the kind of life that we have together here. And we pray all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll just add one more word. Go Braves.
Goodness. Pastor Harper, the electronic recycling, has that taken place already?
It was last Saturday.
How did it go?
I think it went well, yeah.
It went well? So we appreciate you opening-
They did a great job.
Thank you. Thank you so much for partnering with the community and helping us to recycle. So electronics were given at First Presbyterian Church, and I know you all do that annually, and you help shred and all of that stuff. So thank you so much for helping us with the ecology. And thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge. So the announcements and presentation, my name is Rochelle Robinson, a mayor of the City of Douglasville. I'd like to welcome you to our Douglasville Legislative Work Session. This is a work session where agenda items are presented for discussion only, and no official action will be taken tonight. Official action will be taken on these items discussed tonight on next Monday, October the 16th, at 6:00 p.m. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the agenda item, comments from citizens and delegates for you to discuss your business. Just a few protocol issues I'd like to go over with you, and then we can get into the meat of the meeting. I would ask that you would please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack against any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the chair if you do that, and if you deviate for a second time for that requirement, a second deviation will result in us turning the microphone off and not having you continue your comments. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud or react to speakers. Speak from the audience, carry on a conversation when you're at the microphone, just talking to the microphone, and address all of your concerns and comments to the chairperson. I'll remind you that we're only required to accept public comments during public hearings. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, I'll ask that you would please put those in silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting so they will not be disruptive. Now, the agenda items will be handled in the following manner. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, then that person or applicant representing that agenda item will come forward, present your information to the chair. Myself and councilmembers will possibly ask questions to help us understand better so we'll be able to vote next Monday. After that, committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience. There is a maximum of 20 minutes for those in favor of the item and 20 minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes to speak. When you come to the microphone or to the podium, please give us your name and address for the record. If you'd like to speak on public comments, there is a blue comment card, and we ask that you would please fill that card out. You can give it to our Assistant City Manager, and she will take the information from you, Ms. Jackson, and she will submit that into the record. If you have anything that needs to be printed, we ask that you would give that to our Assistant City Manager, Ms. Candice. She will make copies and distribute that information to us. That's a whole lot of talking. Hopefully, we're all on the same page and we can get into the meeting. We do have paper copies outside on the desk if you'd like to have one of your agenda, and/or you can follow us on the screen. Now, we will go through each committee, and that person, committee chairperson, will present if they have business to handle. If not, then we'll continue to move throughout the agenda. So now we are at item number five, which is Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by City Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on then to the next committee, which is Finance Committee, chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have three items to discuss tonight. All of these are budget amendments.
Yes, sir.
We'll begin with Item A, Adopt an Ordinance to Amend the City of Douglasville's Fiscal Year 2022-23 General Fund Budget. Ms. Karen Callen is going to give us that information. Thank you, Ms. Callen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Karen Callen, 6695 Church Street, Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer. This is the last quarter budget amendment for the general fund for fiscal year '23. For the revenue section, we are increasing interest income by $100,000. Local option sales tax, increasing that, adjusting it to actual by $200,000. Alcohol excise tax and beer, wine, liquor, and pouring, a total of $10,000 and $57,000 increase in total revenue. And business license premium, excuse me, business taxes, insurance premium tax, $300,000 increase. A total revenue increase of $697,000. For the expense side, for non-departmental, we did have some insurance premiums under the deductible that increased our budget line by $100,000. Police department in maintenance building cost, $13,500. For the lights on Church Street, East West Church Street and Old Dallas Highway, increasing that budget by $230,000. Parks Athletics, park maintenance, and some personnel lines. And by the time you net everything together, we are increasing our contingency by $218,000. So there are more revenues increases than expense increases, so a net of $218,000. And lastly, we do have a Gatsby 84 conversion line for increasing revenues and expenses by $677,594, and that is an honored adjustment.
Questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Callen. Anyone? I know that these are all bookkeeping matters, and it's good, it looks good to us when we have $697,000 more in income than we had anticipated. That tells me that Ms. Callen and her staff have done a great job on being conservative as far as budgeting is concerned, and it's good. And so we then have those additional revenues to use in other areas. If there are no questions or comments, would it be appropriate to place this on the consent agenda for Monday? Thank you.
Looks good.
Thank you. We'll move on then to Item B, and Ms. Callen, stay right there. Adopt an ordinance to amend the City of Douglasville's Fiscal Year 2022-23 Development Authority Fund Budget.
Yes, sir. This is for the Elevate Douglas Fund that we use, that we have, and there were some bond issuance fees or revenue that we received through the Relish Lab bond issue. That, half of that goes to the Development Authority, and then we also received an additional $15,000 from other small bond issuance fees for business that they had during the year.
Again, I'll open the floor for any questions or comments. Again, a bookkeeping item, last amendment for the City of Douglasville's Fiscal Year 22-23 Development Authority Fund Budget. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
What is Relish Lab again?
Someone will know, we hope.
Isn't that the Kroger thing?
It's, I forgot the exact name, but somewhat like the meal prep service, like HelloFresh, but it's through Kroger. It's Home Chef. There we go. Home Chef, that was announced.
It's the name of a business, in other words. Yes.
So they changed their name?
Yes, they didn't change their name. That is the name of their actual incorporation or their LLC. It's Relish Labs.
Yeah, we knew it as Home Fresh. All right, just no idea.
Okay. Home Chef, yeah. Same question, any reason we should not place this on the consent agenda, please? Okay. We'll go to Item C, one last thing. Adopt an ordinance to amend the City of Douglasville's Fiscal Year 2022-23 ARPA Fund Budget, and Ms. Heather Campbell is going to help us with that. Ms. Campbell?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Heather Campbell, Accounting Manager, 6695 Church Street. This is the second budget amendment for ARPA. ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Fund that the city received. City received $12.6 million, in which $10 million was unrestricted. The funds must be encumbered by 2024 and spent by 2025. Once we decided to move the recycling center from ARPA to, or recycling center to ARPA, we had to move some projects to other funding sources. This budget amendment is to line up all current projects with actuals. So I won't go over every line in detail, but there are notes by each line saying what they're each for, and the memo with some highlighted, with some highlights attached. The overall increase is $61,000, and that was due to an increase in interest earnings. So that's a good sign for us. As far as expenditures go, some of the big ones were reducing IT's machinery line by $667,000. This is due to the Ike Owings Center AV upgrades and camera replacements being moved to different funding sources. The computer line is reducing by $206,000 due to city Wi-Fi replacement, conference center network switches, city hall network switches, and computer replacements being moved to other funding sources. In PD, we're reducing the property site improvements line by $117,000. This is due to the digital entry signs being moved to a different funding source, and the LED parking lot lights coming in much lower than anticipated. We are increasing their computer line. This is due to the lease purchase of mobile radios and portable radios and a Fortigate firewall. That increases $115,000. And in Public Services, we increased their machinery line by $158,000 for a purchase of a mini rear loader garbage truck. And then the other professional service line, we increased by $194,000 for professional services needed for the new recycling center.
So, Ms. Campbell, basically, all we're doing is we're moving those ARPA funds into the areas that we needed them and allocating them so that we know where all of the money that we have been given is being allocated to, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. This is just making every line line up with all the projects that we have.
Got you. Okay. Question, comment? Yes, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Heather. I do have a question. I mean, you were talking about LED lighting and all of that. Is this money covering the charging stations that we have in the parking deck for electric cars? Or where is that coming from?
It was not. I believe that came out of SPOST, 2016 SPOST.
Okay, so that's SPOST. It is not in this group, these groups of money? Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Once again, I'd like to place this on the consent agenda for Monday. I thank you. Appreciate that. Madam Mayor, then that's all that we have under Finance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and Ms. Callen, and Ms. Campbell. We appreciate that. We'll move on then to Housing and Community Affairs Committee. The vice chair is Councilmember Adams.
No business tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee, and I'll ask Mayor Pro Tem if you don't mind taking that committee, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, there is no business tonight under the Legislative Intergovernmental Committee.
Thank you, sir. Personnel and Organization Committee, chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Personnel and Organization.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Adams, I hope you have some water over there. It is your committee again, Planning and Development Committee, chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have several items tonight. First will be to hold a public hearing and consider a request for a special land use permit for a religious institution or place of worship for properties owned R2, single-family residential detached district, being approximately 4.28 acres on Malone Street, Land Lot 739, District 1, Section 3, parcel ID is 07390130017. The application is by HRC Samuel Kinimer. Ms. Marissa Jackson, our staff will handle that item.
Good evening, Marissa Jackson, Planning and Zoning Administrator, 6701 Church Street. Tonight, you'll notice that Items A and B are related. Item A is a request for a special land use permit for a religious institution or place of worship. It is required to get a special land use permit because it's currently zoned R2, and the updated zoning ordinance that was adopted in 2019 requires that places of worship zoned R2 obtain special land use permits to operate. You'll note that this is an existing place of worship, and they are planning to expand their operation, and therefore, they need the special land use permit to come into compliance.
So the change in our zoning ordinance is what has caused them to have to be here? Okay. Good enough. All right. Is there anyone representing HRC that would come and make any statement or give us any information concerning this? If so, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and we'll be happy to hear from you.
Good evening. Samuel Kinimer, I'm here with HRC 6554 Church Street. I think that Marissa did a great job summarizing while we're coming forward for the special land use. From the best of our knowledge, there's been a church on this property since the early to mid-'80s, and as the church congregation prepares to hopefully add on to their church building and do some parking and things like that, we need to get our special land use permit in order and should keep us moving along with that, so.
Okay. This being a public hearing, I do want to give opportunity before we open the floor for those that may be for it or against it, I want to have the opportunity for council and Madam Mayor to ask any questions. So I'll open that floor. Anyone have any questions concerning this item of the applicant? Okay. Yes, Coach, go ahead.
The pastor's residence on the property, that will remain the same?
Is that the building that's, I guess, on the other side of the creek, kind of in the corner?
I'm not sure. I just read it in the agenda item that there was a residence for the pastor on the property. The only thing I read was that the trailer that's being used for worship would be removed. But I didn't see anything about the pastor, so I just was wondering about that.
As of right now, there's no plan to remove that building, but like you said, the trailer, I think maybe the children's ministry or something like that right now, that will go away with the future expansion if it goes that way.
Okay. Others? Anyone else? Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against the application? If so, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and our mayor has already given the rules, ground rules, for speaking on those items. Anyone here that'd like to speak for or against? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll close that portion of the public hearing. If there are any other questions anyone would have, otherwise, we'll take that up on Monday and move on. Okay? Thank you. Item B is connected, as Ms. Jackson has mentioned. Item B is Hold a Public Hearing and Consider Request for a Variance from Section 9.01E of the Unified Development Ordinance to reduce the 50-foot undisturbed buffer by 12 and 1/2 feet for remaining requirement of 37 and 1/2 feet, and to reduce the 75-foot impervious buffer by 18.75 feet for remaining requirement of 56.25 feet on a lot of approximately 4.28 acres on Malone Street in Land Lot 739, District 1, Section 3, parcel ID number 07390130017. Again, application by HRC, care of Samuel Kinimer, and Ms. Jackson is going to help us with that.
On this item, the applicant is requesting a variance from the city's stream buffer requirements. The city has a 50-foot stream buffer, and in addition to that, a 75-foot impervious setback. The creek takes up a significant portion of the site, and the, on the site plan, you'll note that the parking area encroaches into the impervious setback in the stream buffer. So the applicant is requesting to reduce the 75-foot impervious setback by 18.75 feet to 56.25 feet, and then they're requesting to reduce the 50-foot stream buffer from 50 feet to 37.5 feet.
Okay. Questions? Yes, Coach Watts, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I guess, you and I talked about this earlier, but just for the public's sake, the state has a different requirement than the city. That's not quite as-
Right, I understand that the state has a lesser, lesser amount of requirements of setbacks, so even if we, if we grant this variance, we would still be at or above what the state requirement is. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does that help you, Coach? Sure. Any other question, comment? Okay. We would ask again if there is- Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Are there any questions of Mr. Kinimer from HRC? All right. Then we'll go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this application for variance on this site? Seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing, and we'll take this item up for a vote on Monday. Thank you very much. Move on to Item C. Hold a public hearing and consider a request for, consider a proposed ordinance to amend subsections 2.02, 2.05, 2.06, 8.04, and 13.02 of Unified Development Ordinance to allow the use of shipping containers for commercial activities in certain zoning districts. Ms. Shayla Reed, please.
Greetings, Mayor and Council. Shayla Reed, Community Development Director. This item has come before you in a conversation in your committee's meeting regarding the desire to have shipping containers with commercial use. During that time, there was a request to add retail stores, general stores, so we added that to the list. We took that document over to the Planning Commission at their meeting earlier this month. They then allowed for there to be a recommendation of approval, and it came back the same way you provided it over to them as council.
Okay. Questions, comments? Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, does that provide for what you had requested-
Yes, it does.
-as to a change? Okay. Any comment, Madam Mayor? Anyone? Because we, we do need to have a public hearing, so I do need to open the floor then if there be anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this item as far as shipping containers within certain commercial zoning districts. Anyone? For or against? Seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing, and we'll take this-
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. One quick question. Do we have, I'm not seeing anything in there that, that regulates the way that the shipping containers can be combined, because that's typically what happens in a lot of these types of developments, is you start to, you start to stack them and you combine them. Do we, has, did we come across any regulations in any other communities that have them that limit the number, for instance, how high you can go, how wide?
So each classification has its own height limitations? So as long as it's meeting that height limitation within that classification, it's fine?
So it'll only be restricted by the existing classifications within that zoning?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. So we're not restricting what you can do with the containers specifically? Okay.
Yes, sir.
And I think also, it would, it needs to be noted that it may not be quite so simple as just adding them or tying them together, stacking them on top of one another, because they're still going to have to abide by the other requirements as far as ADA and Fire Marshal and those kinds of things. So there are some other added precautionary items that have to be taken care of. All right, we'll take this up then on Monday, Item C. Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Thank you.
We'll go to Item D. Consider Request for Plat Approval for the Purpose of Subdividing 12.041 Acres on Chapel Hill Road in Land Lots 56 and 57, District 1, Section 5, Parcel 00560150137 into a 2-acre tract and a 10.041-acre tract. Application by Land Pro Surveying, care of Stan Heats. Mr. James Gordon's going to help us with that item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm James Gordon, 6701 Church Street, Engineering Department. This exemption plat, as stated earlier, is originally a 12.041 tract of land. It's heavily wooded at this time, and they're separating out two acres, which is right behind the Zest Academy, and then they're going to leave the remaining 10 acres, over 10 acres, undeveloped at this time.
This is on the corner of Golf Ridge and Chapel Hill Road.
That's correct. That's, that's leading into the golf course, and it has that small bit of a commercial, commercial buildings right there on the corner.
Okay.
And Zest Academy is in that first commercial building.
Questions, comments, anyone? Any public comment? Anyone else? Anything else, Mr. Gordon?
No.
That's it? All righty. We see that application and the survey and the tracts that are identified there. Take this up on Monday for a vote. Item E. Consider Request for Plat Approval for the Purpose of Combining Approximately 1.539, I'm sorry, 1.593 acres at Odessa Street in Land Lot 20, District 1, Section 5, Parcel Application by Omega Metals, care of Charles R. Fur. Ms. Marissa Jackson?
Hello, Marissa Jackson again. This item is a request for an exemption plat to combine two parcels. They're both zoned LI, and the applicant would like to combine them just so that they're together and they're connected.
So you would wind up with one tax bill?
Yes. Staff has reviewed this item, and we find that it meets our standards of approval.
Okay. So just combining two, two parcels into one, same owner of both parcels?
Yes.
Okay. You all have that before you, Madam Mayor, or anyone, anyone on council have any question or comment about that? Okay. We'll take this up on Monday. Thank you very much, Ms. Jackson. And the last item, Adopt a Resolution to Adopt the City of Douglasville's Comprehensive Plan. Ms. Reed?
Yes, sir. So we have gone the last couple of months completing the assessment of the comprehensive plan. We've met with the residents, we've had the two required public hearings that the state requires. We have worked very closely with GMC and their president tonight to complete this file, and we've had a great opportunity working with the public, working with you all, and I'm excited to say that we've met the state's deadline in asking for your consideration in adopting this file.
Okay. Questions, comments? Anyone? I know this has been a long process. I know Ms. Reed and her staff have worked very hard and diligent to get this update completed within the deadline. I know that all of us have read all 261 pages of it.
Several times.
And so I'll ask if there's any question or comment by anyone concerning this. Okay. We don't have all of our members here tonight. I would like to see this placed on the consent agenda, as many times as we have looked at it and reviewed items within it. If that's not something you feel comfortable with, then that's fine, but if so, I'd like to place it on the consent agenda.
Head shaking, yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. That's all that we have tonight-
Thank you.
...under Planning and Development. Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and staff. Those were great reports. We have lots going on. So we'll move on now to Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening in public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Relations Committee is chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No business this evening.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on then to Public Safety Committee, and our vice chair is Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have several items.
Yes, sir.
Item A, Hold a Public Hearing to Consider the Application for the Alcoholic Beverage License for the Sale and Consumption on Premises of Wine and Malt Beverages at the Following Establishment. Proposed Licensee SMG Hospitality LLC, DBA High Noon Eatery. Location is at 8440 Courthouse Square East. Proposed Agent Outlet Manager, Michelle Hudson Perryman. The required fees have been paid into the Finance Department. And Ms. Perryman, are you here tonight? If you would like to come forward and tell us what you, what you got here? Love to hear from you. Your name and address for the record when you start, please.
Everyone, Michelle Hudson Perryman, 3605 Long Lake Drive, Douglasville, Georgia 30135. And we're basically just asking for permission to get the alcohol license for High Noon Eatery, which is a new business that we serve breakfast and brunch, and the hours of operation are Wednesday through Friday from 9:00 to 4:00 a.m., and Saturday and Sunday, 10:00 to 5:00, 5:00, 4:00 p.m. I'm sorry about that. So I did give you guys just a brief introduction and then the menu, so you guys can kind of see what's on our menu. and then the menu, so you guys can kind of see what's on our menu.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Perryman. And this is on the, the corner, okay, right there on, fronts on Veterans Memorial and East Courthouse Square. Okay. Before we go to the public hearing, might have several questions from council. We'll start with Councilman Adams.
Yes, Ms. Perryman, just, you mentioned your hours. And I see on the cover sheet that you sent us as an introduction, you gave your hours as Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 4:00?
I'm sorry, it should have been Wednesday through...
Wednesday through Friday. That's what you just said.
Yes.
Okay, so Wednesday through Friday?
Yes.
And then on Saturday and Sunday from 10:00 to 4:00?
Yes.
Okay. And this, this request is for an alcohol beverage license for that location. You're already operating there with a business license. You just want to add beer, wine, and liquor?
Beer and wine.
Beer and wine only? Okay. You have other experience in the service of alcoholic beverages. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yes, I do. Well, I've worked in the restaurant industry before to where I did, like, as far as serve, like, the beer and wine. So, I definitely do know that you have to kind of be cautious when you're serving. Make sure you do not over-serve, you know, customers and card everyone.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had. Coach?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming in. We appreciate you coming in this evening. I do have a question. So, you are operating currently, is it at the former Crew?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And you're operating currently just doing breakfast and brunch?
Yes.
Okay. Didn't realize that. And so, you're just now coming so that you'll have some bubbly's or something with your...
Mimosa's, yes, to go ahead and spice it up a little since it is brunch, and normally brunch does have mimosa's.
Yes, ma'am. How's the business going?
It's growing so far. So, everything's going good, but it'll be even better if we was able to just give the mimosa's.
Yes, ma'am. Well, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Real quick question for City Manager. What is the serving hours on Sunday? I, I forget.
I'll have to look them up really quick. I don't know them off the top of my head.
Okay, because I see, I see they'll be open from, from 10:00 to 4:00?
11:30. I know it's different than the 2:00 a.m. It's shorter.
So, y'all understand on Sunday, you'd have to follow within those guidelines as far as the hours?
Yes, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00.
And they'll, they'll make sure you've got that information. Any other questions or comments from, anyone down at that end? No? All right, let's go ahead and do a public hearing. Ms. Perryman, just stay close here for a minute, but you can have a seat. We'll allow anybody that wants to come forward. If there's anyone here tonight, you've already been given the rules for public hearings. And if there's anyone for or against this item, please come forward at this time. And in the spirit of Councilman Davis, since there's no takers, we'll close, we'll close the public hearing. And Ms. Perryman, we will take this up and vote on this on Monday. Thank you for coming forward. And we're glad, we, we love to get new restaurants in downtown areas. So, we hope you're successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item B. Authorize the City Police Department staff to accept the 2023 Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Award from the U.S. Office of Justice Programs in the amount of $19,643 to be utilized for portable communications for liaison officers. And our Deputy Chief Davidson will handle this item.
He's not here tonight. You got the tall one instead.
What, what's that now?
Some of us don't like that word.
Yeah. Brad Stafford, 2083 Fairburn Road, major operations at the police department. We're here to ask, it's already been voted on to accept the Burn Grant. I believe this, what you'll be voting on on Monday is simply for us to accept the grant. It's just under $20,000. We get this, it's a non-matching grant that we get every year for safety equipment. This year, we'll be using it for radio equipment.
So, did you say, so we'll, we'll match this amount?
No, sir. It's a non-matching grant.
Okay, it's not a matching amount. Okay. Any questions or comments? We've seen this many times before. And, yes, sir.
Just, just a question. How much taller are you than Davidson?
A lot taller.
A lot taller.
A lot taller.
Any, any other questions that don't have to do with height?
Thank you.
Well, Deputy Chief, we're going to try to place this on the consent agenda unless there's objections. I've talked with Councilman Davis. He's okay with that also. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Chief, thank you. All right, last item. Authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Judicial Corrections Services LLC, JCS, for Douglasville Municipal Court Probation Services. And Ms. Cochran will handle this.
Angie Cochran, Court Service Administrator, 2083 Fairburn Road. This is the contract with our probation department. They monitor all our offenders. Their name, Judicial Correctional Services. The only thing that they're changing is the fees going up from $35 to $40. But the city does not pay that. The offenders will pay it. That's part of their monitoring fee. And that's the only thing that I could see that had changed in the contract from the previous contracts.
Ms. Cochran, how long have we been using this service?
Well, way before I came. But I have known JCS for 20 years. I used them in other cities also as their probation company. They're, they're a great company. They do a great job. They keep us informed like they're supposed to, and they do a really good job.
Do we have any question? Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. Good to see you, Ms. Cochran.
Good to see you.
I know you're busy over there in courts.
They're still going at it right now. I might have to go back.
Oh, my goodness. Some overtime. So, the monitoring, you said that that fee would go up and it would be passed on to the consumer?
Yes.
And so, is it the wristband or the ankle or...?
No, it's just they, they, they go to probation like once a month and report, and just they see how they're doing, making sure they're, you know, following the rules, paying their fine. Most of them are pay-only, so they're usually only on probation for about three months.
Okay.
So, it's, just gets people to, you know, get in there and...
Accountability.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cochran.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions or comments? All right, would like, I'd like to put this on the consent agenda also.
Looks like yes.
Thank you, Ms. Cochran. Appreciate that. And Madam Mayor, that's all I had tonight under public safety.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chairman. I will continue to ask you to do a committee with Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee. That's chaired by yourself, Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item. Authorize the mayor to sign an easement, granting easement rights to Georgia power for property located at 9090 Rose Avenue, Douglasville, Georgia, West Pines Golf Course, maintenance building, and to sign all other documents to effectuate the easement transfer. Mr. Thompson?
Marcus Thompson, City Engineer, 6701 Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia, 30134. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Mr. Thompson.
All right, so the, the two documents before you this evening, the construction agreement as well as the easement. It's basically to release Georgia power to proceed with installing, well, running an underground distribution line to support the new facility at the West Pines Golf Course for the maintenance shop for power. In my opinion, I feel as though this is more aesthetically pleasing. It'll help parks and recreation to be able to maneuver the equipment easily throughout the, the golf course, and also help, help so that trucks can import material easy without hitting those overhead distribution lines. Are there any questions or concerns?
Anybody? Yes. Councilman Adams?
So, Mr. Thompson, basically, they're just transferring this from an overhead to an underground service is what they're doing. And in doing so, then that prepares then for the new building that's being built there for the maintenance shop, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
Yes, sir. Any other questions on this item? All right, thank you, Mr. Thompson. I'd like to place this on a consent agenda for Monday. All right.
Looks like a yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all I had tonight under Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you so much, Coach, and thank you to our City Engineer, Mr. Thompson. We appreciate that explanation. We'll move on then to the next item, which is item number 15, Technology Committee. That's chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item under the Technology Committee tonight, and that is to authorize the mayor to sign Proposal Quotation Number 23986142 and related documents with SHI International Corporation for volume licensing to continue the city's use of Microsoft Office 365 and other software. And our illustrious head of IT, Mr. Sam Jenkins, will explain this in plain English for us.
All right, ma'am.
Excellent. Hello, Madam Mayor and Council. Sam Jenkins, 6695 Church Street. So, basically, it's the time for us to renew our Microsoft licensing fees. We do this every three years, and we pay on an annual base. But basically, this right here is renew our O365, which covers all Microsoft Teams, emails, Word, and all the other applications. And we also have it now for our Microsoft Server License as well. So, this is what this right here will bring for you tonight.
So, this is much different than what those of us individual users of Microsoft 365 essentially just writ large for an entire city?
Correct, correct. And actually, we get a better price being government than what an individual would like get, so...
Special pricing on that.
Yes.
Any questions from the mayor or council on this issue? Seeing none. Do we have anything left that's not on the consent agenda? I'll be happy to put this on for... That's where you, there's only one. All right, if there's no objection, then we'll go ahead and put this on the consent agenda as well, I suppose. Make it a full...
Thank you.
That's all we have. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Madam Mayor, that's all we have under the Technology Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. We'll move on then to the next committee, which is Transportation Committee. And Mayor Pro Tem, you are the vice chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business at this time under the Transportation Committee.